Welcome to the regular City Council meeting, October 1st, 2018, in the city of Morganton. I'd like to call ourselves to order and ask, have the Pledge of Allegiance allowed? As far as Fleming, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much, and please be seated.
This time, I'd like to call on Reverend Marshall Jolly from Grace Episcopal Church to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Oh God, the Creator of the human family and the source of all life, you have given us a vision of a just, equitable, and peaceful common life together, and you have raised up among us faithful women and men as servants of the public trust. Fill them with wisdom and discernment as they work together to lead our community toward a time and place where liberty and justice truly do exist for all your people. When we lose sight of your vision for us or stray from the path you have set before us, remind us and call us back to yourself. Equip us with the courage to do what is right rather than what is expedient, to do what is fair rather than what will save face, to listen for understanding rather than rebuttal. Finally, give us the foresight and the faith to plant trees under whose shade we will never sit. These things we ask in humility and gentleness of spirit. Amen.
Amen. Marshall, thanks so much. Next, I'd like to introduce City Council to my far right, Wendy Cato, City Council, Forrest Fleming, City Council, Louis Vina, our City Attorney, Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor, Sally Sandy, our City Manager, Sidney Simmons, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Carolyn Richardson, our Recording Secretary, and Joy Hearn Guzman, our interpreter for the deaf community. First item of agenda is a service pin. David Abernathy, who's a sign technician, has worked for Public Works for 25 years. David cannot be with us. We'll make sure he gets that service pin. Thank you so much for 25 years of service. Under public advocacy issues and strategies, first is the consideration of revising our public comment policy. I'll call on City Attorney Louis Vina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been discussed from time to time by council for some time. Anyone who's come to our meetings or has been watching on television knows that we've had the public comment period at the beginning at 6:00. Under our policy, we've set aside 15 minutes, 6:00 to 6:15, even though our policy actually allowed for up to 30 minutes. And then we've just recessed until 6:15. If we didn't have comments to fill that period, anybody who's been watching knows that in the last year or two, we've had virtually, we've never, except one time, I think, filled the full 15 minutes. Frequently, we haven't had any comments, and so we've had a long period of silence and unusable time. So the suggestion from staff was to amend the first paragraph of the comment policy, the public comment policy, to just say that our public comments will be at the very beginning of the council meeting before any business. They shall not exceed 15 minutes in duration. In other words, if comments run full of that, at 6:15, we'll move into business. If we don't have any comments, or if they're over in less than 15 minutes, then as soon as the comments are over, we would move straight into the business meeting. And that's what the policy would be revised to say. It's just a policy, it's not an ordinance, but if you direct so direct, if the council so directs, we'll make that change effective beginning with the November meeting.
What's the consideration of council?
Motion to approve changes to the public comment procedures to allow for the start of regular business if there are not 15 minutes of public comments.
Have a motion to have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda would be the Community Appearance Advisory Commission. I believe we have some people who'd like to speak. John Cantrell, who chairs our Community Appearance Advisory Commission, and Scott Luckadoo, the staff liaison. He'll please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just take a minute now to thank and recognize the members of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission, John Cantrell, Chairman, Barbara Norville, Bill Lennon, Eddie McGimsey, Judy Lane, Martha Franklin, Liz Beach, Laura Urban Smith, and James Bagley. Community Appearance Advisory Commission, what a charge, champions for beauty, guardians of ours and protection of our environment. This committee has been active, and I've had the privilege of working with them for many years, reviewing plans, integral part, contributing members of downtown visioning, master plan development, anything that the city's involved in, they are the standard bearer for the appearance. And we look at our streetscapes and tree plannings and are thankful for the standards that they set. Tree planting has always been an important part of the community appearance. Arbor Day celebrations annually, inviting students and children to be a part of tree planting, that was a regular event. Education, litter campaigns. We are privileged to have, as a result of the Community Appearance Contest, the Good Habit Rabbit is our logo, and Real People Don't Litter is our slogan. Important parts of our community. Another vital part of our community, they're the champions of public private partnerships. Before that was even a buzzword, because they recognize private development with awards and commendations, emphasizing the importance of contributing to the aesthetic value, the appearance of our community. And also advice to council and to staff to also take care of the nuisances and abatements in order to keep our city clean. So many great things, a great committee. We have a special recognition tonight, and I'd like to introduce and welcome John Cantrell, Chairman of Community Appearance.
Thank you very much, Scott. It's a real privilege and an honor to be back on this commission. And I had, I guess I was kicked off when I got into the political side. But in addition to what Scott just said, I'm sure each one of you noticed the crape myrtles that are on South Sterling Street this summer. Have you ever seen them more beautiful than they were this year? Well, there's one person that's been the chairman of this commission for many, many years, and he's been very instrumental in the direction that this commission has gone. And he has been quite a citizen that has been, has given of his time and his talents over the years. And we, this commission, would like to honor him. And I have a certificate of commendation that I'd like to read. And this is a certificate of commendation given to Bill Allman. In grateful recognition for outstanding service to the community, the city of Morganton thanks you for the many years of service as a member and chairman of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission for the city of Morganton. This commendation is to recognize hours of work that you have given to ensure that Morganton always has its best phase forward. Your commitment to excellence is recognized by peers, the City Council, and the staff of the city. Citizens like you are what helped make our city the wonderful place it is to live, work, play, and for that, we commend you, given this day, the 9th of October, 2018. And there will be a reception for Bill at Grace Ridge in the Table Rock Room, and the public is invited. And this is signed by Sally Sandy, City Manager, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Scott Luckadoo, Director of Public Works, and John Cantrell, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, John. John, let the commission stand. Those members of the commission that are here, could they please stand so we can be recognized?
Is anyone here?
Are they still here?
Eddie's here.
Eddie, stand up. A great job.
There were a handful of them here at the 4:00 meeting.
Right. A lot of them came to the 4:00 meeting, didn't realize they needed to stay around for the 6:15 meeting. Okay. Next, we have proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas the city of Morganton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all things living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas nearly 3,000 people die each year as a result of home fires, and whereas unattended cooking appliances are the leading cause of home structure fires and associated injuries, and the third leading cause of home fire deaths, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms, and whereas the city of Morganton Public Safety Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and proper education, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere, effectively serves to remind us that all the simple actions we can take to keep our homes and families safe from the fire during Fire Prevention Week year-round. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby claim October as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all citizens of Morganton to protect their homes and families by heeding the important message of Fire Prevention Month 2018. Adopted this first day of October, 2018, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do you have a motion to accept that proclamation?
So moved.
Have a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay.
Captain Campbell.
Captain Campbell.
He's behind the post.
Would you like to make some comments, please? I couldn't see you over there. Thank you.
Sorry, I was behind the post.
That's okay.
On behalf of Public Safety, Fire Services Division, we thank you for your continued support. We're going to be very busy this month, engaged in fire prevention. We already have multiple events scheduled. We're going to be out in the community. We're going to be heavily engaged. So if you see us out, wave at us. We're out educating the community, and we want to come out. And if there's any questions regarding fire, fire safety, anything, please contact us at any time.
Thank you, John.
And we appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is Public Power Week Resolution. I'd like to read that resolution, please. Whereas public power is a critical component in the city of Morganton, contributing to the overall health of communities by providing reliable electricity, excellent local service, and prompt restoration, and whereas Morganton is one of North Carolina's more than 70 public power communities and among more than 2,000 across the country, and whereas many of North Carolina's public power cities and towns, including Morganton, have been electric providers for more than 100 years, and whereas public power meets the electric needs of 40 million Americans, almost 15% of electricity consumers, and whereas North Carolina's public power utilities are valuable community assets that contribute to the well-being of the community by providing economic development opportunities, and whereas North Carolina's public power utilities are dependable institutions that provide excellent service and a commitment to community, with Morganton's reliability rating consistently exceeding 99%. Now therefore, be it resolved that the week of October 7th through 13th, 2018, is Public Power Week, a week to promote and celebrate the city of Morganton as a public power community, and be it further resolved that the city of Morganton will join with all public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power. Adopted this day, on October 1st, 2018, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do you have a motion to accept this resolution?
I move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. I'd like Brooks Kirby to, oh, excuse me, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Brooks Kirby, if you'll come forward. Brooks, will y'all be out in the community, or what will y'all be doing?
I'll be out there working, sir.
Thank you.
We have a short video we'd like to show.
Thank you.
And it's a tearjerker. These lines, the ones that crisscross my town, are like the lines of my family tree. They tell you our history, our struggles, our triumphs. These lines, like the creases in my father's hands, show the hard work and sacrifices of a line worker. Up before dawn, I'll pass dinner. In the dark, in the sun, in the pouring rain. These lines are his worry lines and laugh lines, squinting towards the future while shouldering the burden of today. These lines are the connections he helped build between people, businesses, and organizations. A growth chart, showing our progress, telling the story of how we invested in ourselves, created new opportunities, and trained the next generation. Most people don't know my father built these lines, and that's fine with him, because we are public power, and these lines are our lines.
Particularly sensitive for eastern North Carolina, right?
Yes. On behalf of the men and women in the Electric Department, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, for recognizing the service that your Electric Department provides to the people and businesses of Morganton. We work hard to maintain and operate over 220 miles of power lines which supplies electricity to over 8,000 customers on our system. Since 1899, Morganton has had a rich tradition of keeping the power on through countless storms and constant changes and a few suicide squirrels. This year, we continue to have a display set up at City Hall this next week that will have pamphlets explaining the benefits of being a public power provider. We'll also have small gifts available to the citizens as well as refreshments. In addition, we'll have David Drawings for energy kits for the customers on City Power, and we'll have a signup sheet for those who want to have free energy audits performed at their homes. But through it all, we cannot have done it without the guidance and the support of this City Council and our City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Next on our agenda is the wastewater project update. Brad Boris, Director of Water Resources, please. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just want to give you a brief update on the process conversion project for about a year into an 18-month, $9 million-plus-dollar project. Most of the large things that we were going to be looking at were the primary, or the secondary clarifiers, two new sedimentation aeration basins, and also some splitter boxes. This first picture we have here, June of this year, where they were about halfway through the construction on those two new large equalization aeration basins, and also that structure there in the center is a flow splitter box for those basins as well. This picture was taken end of July, first part of August. You could see those two new aeration basins that are empty. The basin that is in service, you can see the surface aerators that were put in place about a year and a half ago to oxygenate the water, aerate the water for our primary treatment processes. These basins, what's left is the critical path to put the fine bubble diffusers down into those basins. We'll have some associated piping completed probably by the end of November, first part of December, and that way we'll be able to start bringing in that process, those new basins, online. Also, you can see where the cement truck is there, just at the 3:00 position. That's the new building that's going to house the blowers that will power those fine bubble diffusers. These pictures here, you can see where they've finished the brick. They're actually starting to complete the veneer at the top. They're also putting a new roof section on. All of that should be completed within the next couple of weeks. The project's still on schedule to be completed in March of 2019. So far, the project has moved along fine, had a few weather hiccups, but all in all, the project has went as planned and scheduled. And lastly, you can see, this is some air piping being installed within the last couple of weeks. You can see those air piping headers that are on the right there. They are already inside that building. There's insulation already being installed in the roof. So now all that's left is to put the blowers in that building, pipe them up to those air headers, finish the associated piping out on the sedimentation aeration basins, and we should have this process active hopefully by the first of the year. Also, on the critical path is we do have some secondary clarifier rehabilitation repairs that are going to be scheduled to be done. However, they have to do a complete plant shutdown for that, so we're going to try to do all of that at the same time so we don't have to do that multiple shutdowns. So that'll happen a little bit later, probably right towards the end of the project, around February. So all in all, we welcome you to come down. Hopefully, maybe in the next month or so, we can take a little tour and see all this stuff firsthand.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to set up a little field trip for us to go, maybe before the November meeting. Nice to go down there in the cooler times.
Any questions for Brad? Brad, thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next on the agenda would be the Morganton Rotary Update. George Milner, who's President of Morganton Rotary Club, I think has a presentation.
What I need to do, Chad? I got you going. I got you going right away. Are you going to?
Oh, well, I can, I can, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak this evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. Rotary Club is one of those service organizations, and Morganton is really blessed with many of them. So today, what I'd like to do is walk through with you what Rotary Club in Morganton has done and is doing in the future. This slide tells you a little bit about the Rotary International. There's about 1.2 million members of Rotary around the world in 185 countries, and the real motto of the club is service above self. We have 60 members here in Morganton that are dedicated to that sort of approach. One of the programs that has been in place since 1985, in 1985, there were 350,000 polio victims around the world. And at that time, Rotary International stepped up and said, we can get rid of this dreaded disease. And since that time, some 99.9% of polio victims have been eliminated. We're down to 15 so far this year, and in only three countries. That's Pakistan, Afghanistan, and Nigeria. So it's been quite a, we partnered with several health organizations around the world, as well as the Gates Foundation. We have several projects that hit here in Morganton, and education is one of the big ones. Rotary Youth Leadership, we send two seniors to a leadership training for four to five days each year. We have a foreign exchange student, as a matter of fact, in Morganton this year from Germany. We have two college scholarships, and we doubled our endowment last year up to $60,000. And interact clubs in both schools, at Patton and at Freedom, and Rise Against Hunter, where we get over 100 kids in each one of those schools to pack 20,000 meals for people outside the country. One of the big things we do is ethics. And if you've ever been to a Rotary meeting, I know the mayor has many times. So in the ethics, we speak to ethics as far as being the truth and being fair to all concerned, et cetera, and we try to teach all this to the youth of the city. Rotary Club in Morganton, 60 members, we meet weekly. We have a great program that is set up, so you learn a lot about what's going on. We serve this community in many, many ways. One of them, we go to Habitat House. As a matter of fact, this weekend, we'll be working. If you want to come out and help us, great, we're working on the Habitat House this weekend, and we have just a great time. How do we accomplish all this? Well, we have generous members, time and treasure, both. But we have two events each year that we try to combine, not only making some money to be used in the community, but also to do something for families in general. The Ohana Mud Run, we started two years ago. Has anybody ever done a mud run?
I've watched it.
Well, if you hadn't done a mud run, you need to come out and at least watch it and walk it. It's not a competition. Matter of fact, this is the only one we found in the nation that is not a competition. We don't time anybody. It is a team-building exercise where people go through there and try to learn how to work as a team and challenge each other and help each other. So Ohana is Hawaiian for nobody gets left behind, family. So it's really, last year, we had close to 900 runners, 800 and something paying, and then we had another 100, close to 100 go through there just for a team-building exercise that we gave out. So we were sold out last year, a month beforehand, and so we encourage people to go ahead and go online and sign up now, because we're going to probably go to about 1,000 this year, but we will sell out again. And the one I really wanted to bring up tonight, for November 3rd, we have the Pancake Breakfast that's been around for 60 or 70 years, I don't know how long, and I'm sure everyone here has attended that. It's at the Community House, and we can't thank you enough for fixing up where we have our meetings at the Community House. We've partnered with the city of Morganton for years and years and years, and it's been a great community partnership between the two. We have 700 or 800 people show up, we make $5,000, $6,000 off of it, and all that money will go back into the community. Seven bucks, cheapest meal you're going to ever have, and you get coffee, all-you-can-eat, eggs, bacon, pancakes, by the way. And so we encourage everybody to come out and buy tickets, and you can buy them at the event that morning on November 3rd, all morning. Any questions?
George, thanks so much.
Did I spend five minutes, Mayor?
That's five minutes. We had to. We did. Thank you, George. Under upcoming events that come, I believe we have five events. First will be My Sinatra starring Carrie Hoffman on Saturday, October 6th, 7:30. What Would Mary Ann Do on Saturday, October 13th, at 7:30. Steel Magnolias movie screening Tuesday, October 16th, at 7:30. Kelly Allman, a Neil Diamond tribute on Thursday, October 25th. Bits and Pieces Puppet Theater that presents Three Billy Goat's Gruff on Thursday, November 1st, at 7:30. Our farmer's market continues on Saturdays and Wednesdays. We have ghost tours on Friday and Saturday, October 19th and 20th, and October 26th and 27th. The tickets are available at the Main Street office. We have Halloween Spooktacular on Wednesday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 6:00. And we have Spooky Meadows going on on Friday and Saturday, October 26th and 27th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. You can look for $1 coupons, $1 off coupons in the News Herald. I'd also like to say on public advocacy that our bus route in Morganton and Burke County started today. People who are listening at home and watching on TV need to realize that you can ride the bus free in October, you can ride the bus free. So we encourage people who do not have or have limited transportation to please use the bus route, learn how to use it, because it's here for your use. A lot of organizations, including the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation, providing funding, and we're excited to finally have a transit system in Morganton, Burke, in Burke County. And we're just, it's off to a great start today. I don't think there were any hitches, but we're just excited that we finally got transportation. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, number one. Sally, do we have an update?
The update is that The update is that nominations for those running for the two seats are due October 12th, so we will bring that information to you in November.
Okay, next on the agenda is, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I believe we have four items. Sally?
We do. Those items include the minutes from the September 10th meeting, a budget amendment for a sewer line extension at 401 Carbon City Road, a ward of contract for roof replacement at Kama to Sam Turner, Turner waterproofing, in the amount of not to exceed $100,000, and then a ward of bid for installation of two air conditioning units at Collet Street Rec. Center in the amount of $84,586.52, and that is to air condition the gymnasium at Collet Street Recreation Center. We would ask that you consider those in one motion unless somebody wants an item removed and discussed separately.
Would you counsel wish to remove any of the item from the consent agenda? Now, to take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some moves.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our first item under new business is a public hearing, and that public hearing and consideration of economic development incentives grant agreement for Project Copy. The public hearing is now considered opening. Would anybody like to speak to the public hearing?
Do you want me to give the summary?
Please give us some summary of that.
Okay, this is the item you, at your September 10th meeting, called for this public hearing. This is for an industry in our community that is currently operating and looking to do an expansion. The capital investment will be about $45 million and create at least 54 new full-time jobs in an effort to encourage this expansion and, and this economic development. You're being asked to consider an economic development incentive grant agreement. Both the city and the county are being asked to consider this. The agreement would be for an eligible grant to the company for five years of up to 50% of the new tax money that is generated from their investment. That would be the match for a 1NC grant, which is a state grant that the company is applying for. It requires a local match. The local incentives in the agreement that the city and county would make would provide that match. This was advertised in the News Herald on September the 18th.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak concerning this public, at the public hearing concerning this grant? Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
I move to approve and enter into an economic development incentive grant agreement for the company known as Project Copy and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, when would, when would this, is this in conjunction with the county? Will they have to do something similar?
Yes, the, the county will be considering this agreement at October 16th, at their October meeting, or is this the one they've already done?
This will be November.
Oh, November for them, November for them.
Any other, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a public hearing and consideration of a rezoning request at 500 West Fleming Drive. I'll open the public hearing. Sally, would you give, well, I'm sorry, Philip Luckadoo, our planning director, would you give us some history, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a request, as stated, for 500 West Fleming Drive. On the screen, what you see is the 2030 future land use map and the current zoning map. This property is projected to be, it is commercial, general, retail, and all the property around it that you notice is currently zoned HID. The Planning Commission voted unanimously at their September 13, 2018 meeting, or nine to zero, to recommend approval of this, and it is in compliance, as I stated, with the 2030 land use plan, and it is congruous with all the surrounding properties.
Thank you. This time, the public has a chance to give any kind of questions concerning this rezoning. 500 West Fleming, that's, that's across from school for the deaf, correct?
It's actually back closer. It's the old, I think there's a mall, there's a mall office building.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Henry Square. Okay. Anyone like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Motion to certify that this rezoning request is in conformance with Morganton's adopted Mission 2030 land development plan.
We have a motion to certify to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Need another motion, please?
Motion to adopt an ordinance for a map amendment of approximately .78 acres of property located at 500 West Fleming Drive from conditional use, general business, to high intensity district.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a text amendment for the City of Morganton zoning ordinance, and I believe, Philip, you can take this, please?
Yes, sir. So, Mayor, members of council.
We have a series, we have a series of those. There are four text amendments that, that will run through, and so we're not all confused as that, are we gonna vote on each one at the end of each text amendment? Would that?
I believe, well, I believe, first of all, we had decided that for simplicity and because there's no problem with doing it this way, you could call a public hearing to consider all of them, but you'll need to vote on each one separately. So it may be that you want, Philip, to summarize each of them first, then call your public hearing to order and see if there is any comment, and then go back and vote on them.
Had we advertised that public hearing?
Yes.
She did.
Philip, would you cover those four, please?
Sure, yes, sir. Mayor, members of the commission, the first one is a, an amendment to Section 4.8.4 in our neighborhood conservation overlay. So what this section of the ordinance did was if you had a vacant lot in the middle of an existing neighborhood and it had the neighborhood conservation overlay on it, it required that you take certain provisions to make sure that that house was compatible with the surrounding properties. Not long after our ordinance was adopted, the North Carolina Legislature adopted North Carolina General Statute 168-381, which essentially limited residential building design standards that a city or county could impose on residential development. And so this amendment, what we, what we have decided to do, there was a couple ways that you could handle this, which, one is to strike this section. What we chose to recommend in, in order to maintain the intent of the Mission 2030 Plan and the intent of the zoning ordinance as it was adopted, was to change some of the language and basically state that there, that the following recommended design elements within each of their subsection, that we would, instead of, the language that says, "You shall meet this," we recommend that you meet this, and anywhere that there is language that says "shall" would be replaced with the word "should." So it has the effect of recommending it to applicants, but not requiring it. And Planning Commission did vote on this at their September 13 meeting unanimously in favor of.
Second text?
Second text amendment is an amendment to the density, or the performance points, rather, that are in our zoning code. And, and as you all know, the perform, the accumulation of performance points is how a developer would be able to increase the density or the number of units per acre that they could place on a, on a piece of property. So this is a way to incentivize certain inclusion of certain elements in a development to, to increase the density or increase the number of units that a developer could sell. What we, with, with the 20, I think everyone will remember that there is an increased demand for density within downtown, within the central business district, and, and to a certain degree, within the city as a whole. So what, what this amendment has the effect of doing is, is incentivizing a couple of things. One is infill development or property, development of properties that are less than two acres. And what that would do is we would change the number of points that you would accumulate for infill development from two points or three points in the central business district to five points or six points in the central business district. The other, the other two categories that were in need of amending were also more germane to downtown are redevelopment of a site with existing building and infrastructure, and then also redevelopment of existing buildings, and both of those would go from two points throughout the city or three points in the central business district to five points throughout the city or six points within the central business district. In, in keeping with that, what we also had to do, if you go to the next slide, what we also did is, is we amended, so on the left is the proposed table, and what this does is it says, okay, if you accumulate the number of points in, in these categories on the left, for example, if you accumulate 12 to 15 points currently, you would get four points, and we're proposing that that would stay the same. Where we, where we actually made the change was, we added a section that if you accumulate 20 to 26 points, then you accumulate, you get an additional 16 units per acre. But within the central business district, if you accumulate 27 and higher, then what you end up with is only the height of the building as your, as your limiting factor. And the other section that I, I was remiss in stating is that we added was that you also get an additional six points if you, if you incorporate retail into your first floor development within the central business district.
So, Philip, this would help with the street-level retail? That's, that would, that should help, correct?
It helps to encourage street-level retail, which is, is something that any, any student of downtown development would, would know, that retail on the first floor is key in a, in a vital, or in a vibrant downtown.
Okay. Third amendment?
Third amendment is a, an amendment to Table 3.1, which is our permitted uses table. So, and much like the, the amendment where we talked about the, the standards for housing and neighborhood conservation, this is a, in permitted uses, as we're, as we're administering this ordinance that was adopted in 2015, we come across sections that, that need to be tweaked from now, from time to time. In this section, we found that in the, in the permitted uses table, pawn shops are allowed, and, and they're allowed currently in the, in all of these districts, the MID, the HID, and the, and the CBD, and there are exceptions. The current exception is that they are not allowed in the river district overlay. They are, however, allowed without any conditions in the neighborhood conservation overlay and also in the corridor overlay. So we felt like that this may have been an oversight when it was originally adopted. The other thing that, that, that you see in this, in the table, and, and as with a lot of these uses that are allowed, particularly within the MID, you see conditions placed. So you'll see that, that the use may be allowed, but there are particular conditions set on it. So what we also are recommending is that the conditions for pawn shops be, that they be in compliance with Section 3.4.5A, which is the same as all the most, I'd say 99% of the other permitted uses that are allowed, commercial permitted uses allowed in the MID district.
Okay, and the fourth amendment?
And the fourth amendment, Mr. Mayor, is an amendment to Section 4.8.2, which is applicability subsection B to include renovation of 50% or greater of an exterior facade of a non-residential development. And, and currently, what we have is, is with, say, within the corridor district or the river district or, or even the central business district, if you are, if you have an existing building and you are not expanding that, that gross floor area by more than 20%, then you, you're not required to comply with the building design standards. And again, in reading the, the Mission 2030 Plan, it was, it was felt that the intent of that was to, over time, when someone takes on a redevelopment project, to, to bring about compliance with those building design standards. Recommendation to require that if you are of your facade, of your primary facade of the building, or in the case of a corner lot where there's two primary facades, then you are in effect redeveloping that building, and therefore, you need to bring that into compliance with the building standards. And so that was brought before Planning Commission, again, at the September 13th meeting, and it was recommended unanimously, non-zero, in favor of adopting that.
We've heard the text amendments. At this time, I'll call for a public hearing to get any public input for the text amendments concerning Section 4.8.4, Table 4.3, 4.5, 4.6, Table 3.1, and Section 4.8.2. If anyone in the public would like to speak to those amendments? If not, public hearing is closed. What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending Section 4.8.4 of the City of Morganton zoning ordinance to bring said ordinance into compliance with NCSGS 1608-381.
Okay. Second. Thank you, Forrest, and Councilman Simmons. Now, is that just on the first amendment? Is that correct?
The first one, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council on number two?
Motion to amend Tables 4.3, 4.5, and 4.6 of the City of Morganton zoning ordinance to provide additional incentives through density bonuses for redevelopment of existing sites and buildings and provision of first-floor retail in the central business district.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The third one?
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending Table 3.1 of the City of Morganton zoning ordinance to include pawn shops as an exception to permitted uses in the neighborhood conservation overlay and the corridor overlay, as well as providing for their compliance with Section 3.4.5 of the zoning ordinance.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
And a second. On, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And the fourth?
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending Section 4.8.2B of the City of Morganton zoning ordinance as proposed by staff and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the effects of which would require exterior remodeling of greater than 50% of any primary facade of a non-residential structure to comply with the ordinance standards.
Second.
I have a motion, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. I'll look over at our interpreter for the deaf community and ask if she would need a break. I can't see her. She's fine. Thank you. Okay. Philip, thank you so much. Next, we have a public hearing and consideration of approving a develop, development incentive grant for the Morganton Lodge and Association. I call the public hearing to order and to consider a DIG grant. I think, Sally, you're gonna take that?
Mm-hmm. Just a little bit of background, and, and this is the second time that the city council has had, had an opportunity to consider a DIG, Development Incentive Grant, since the inception of this program, which has been going on for quite some time. In the last 20 years, we've done two downtown master plans, and the, the first plans, one of the things that came out loud and strong is that Morganton has invested public funds, championed our projects, and actively courted developers to invest in our community and to invest private funding into downtown. One of the ways in which we have attempted to do this is through creating the DIG program. When the DIG program was created as a response to the Mission 2030 Plan, which you've heard a lot about tonight, which is a land use planning document that was centered in economic development and com- development and community development. This program was also presented to Burke County as an opportunity for both the city and the county to have the opportunity to partner with large projects and smaller projects that changed the game, if you will, in our downtown, in our community. There are certain districts that this program relates to, and one of those is our downtown. One of them is the River District you've heard talked about tonight. One of them is the Corridor District, and, and so it is set up to encourage development and to help development in those areas. We have an opportunity before us, and have had a request, to consider one of these for the downtown hotel project. And I want to give just a little bit of information, because I think it's important, and I think it's important that people understand how this was created, how it works, and also because, you know, I'm really big on the numbers, I need to tell you the numbers, because I just think that's important. So what I did was bring just a little bit of information in that is actually from the document, from the guidelines that were set up, reviewed by the City Council, and reviewed by the county commissioners at that time, and adopted. And so the first thing is really a definition about the DIG program. Designed to accomplish a combination of goals related to economic development and community development, efforts identified within the Mission 2030 Plan. So that sets the stage for why we even have this. Also from the documentation, the DIG program provides local developers, financial institutions, investors, and landowners an opportunity to obtain financial support, support from a joint effort between the City of Morganton and Burke County. We do a lot jointly here. Even though we have our differences on how we get to the places, sometimes we do an awful lot of joint work to support economic development in our community, and I think that's important. So within the documentation, there's a whole list of guidelines. And does every project and every request have to meet every guideline, every requirement in there? No, but I wanted to pull out those that I think are most important for this project. Number one, A, expand the Morganton economy to create more jobs with an emphasis on providing job opportunities for the unemployed and the underemployed. I think a hotel definitely meets that. Number C, increase the property tax base of the city and the county, and maintain a future diversity of opportunities for citizens, and to prevent further erosion of existing developed areas. This location on Green Street, this project, meets that, in my opinion. Item D, to clean underutilized or abandoned properties, and this was a vacant piece of land before this project was considered for a lot of years, through adaptive reuse, so that those properties may once again offer a contribution to the community, and eliminate the blighting influences that we have throughout some of the areas in the city. And I think there is no doubt that as we look at Buchell Street, Green Street, and that area over the years, we've seen some blight, and we've seen that area change over the years. It's nice to have a catalyst to try to change that, and to turn that in a very different direction. Item H, support redevelopment efforts that enhance and preserve unique urban features and amenities, including areas, and this goes to the downtown area, the River District, historic neighborhoods of which this qualifies, on either side of the properties, destination retail areas, and then major entry corridors. And so we can tick all of those boxes with this project, really. So those are the considerations in considering this. The questions that you see there now, and you all have a large packet of information in your packets for your review for this, these are the questions that the program requires to be answered for you to consider the project. I'm not going through all of those, although I could answer them all for you, but I know we're not going to stay all night. But I do want to talk about the public purpose, because I think that's important. And what is the public purpose of financial assistance for this particular project and this request? The public purpose is financial assistance to support an economic development project, to help fill a gap that's going to allow financing, commercial financing, to be solidified for a $13 million project in downtown Morganton. For a hotel project creation, increase in avalorum taxes, increase in sales taxes, and increase in occupancy taxes, that are all used to fund services that we provide, and services that are provided to every citizen in Burke County. And now I get to give my civics lesson and talk about that, because it's important, and everybody understands that. So this is the hotel project by the numbers. Currently, the piece of property and its value, if you take 10 years' worth, if we go as we are today, and nothing happens to that property, Morganton, including our downtown tax district, which is 14 cents, is going to collect $26,443 in 10 years on that piece of property. Burke County is going to collect $25,884. If we do the DIG incentive, and we give back the incentive for the five years, and you assume a value, a new value on that property, an improved value of $8 million, which the Burke County Tax Office tells us is a good tax number for this, Morganton is going to collect $333,000, and Burke County is going to collect $324,000. That's at the current tax rates as they sit today. I think that pretty well speaks for itself, but I'm not done quite yet. Because that, that's important for Morganton and Burke County. But why is this important to everybody else? And I want everybody to listen to this, because this is important. Okay? So the second largest revenue to Morganton is our sales tax. Same for Burke County, second to our property tax. That is not true for everybody else in Burke County. And so what happens within the City of Morganton, the Commerce Center of Burke County, that we support with our tax dollars to generate commercial business, and to generate new opportunities, and sales tax happens all over the county, but an awful lot of it gets generated in the city limits of Morganton? That money, the local share, comes back and gets divided up amongst everybody in Burke County. And so the most recent numbers we have, and these come from the Department of Revenue, and I just want you to look down, for instance, look at Glen Alpine, look at Drexel. If you, the middle column shows you the amount of sales tax they received in fiscal year 17, 18, and for some 16, 17, because the new numbers weren't available, and then the amount of avalorum taxes, the property taxes that they levied in their community to provide services to the people who live there. Perfect example, Rutherford College, hate to pick on them, but they're the prime example here. They billed $97,000 last year in avalorum property taxes in their community. So when they billed everybody for all the taxes they owed them, if they collected 100%, they would get $97,000 to provide services in their community. They collected $333,000 in sales tax that very same year. So that sales tax is allowing them to provide the services in the smaller communities, and without it, they would not exist. And this is the math, and this is why anything that generates more sales tax and supports that growth is good for everybody in Burke County. I might also add that Burke County's sales tax distribution, which during 17, 18 was a little over $14 million, that is how Burke County funds their contribution to the Burke County Public School system. And so sales tax affects everybody. Sales tax that gets generated in one jurisdiction goes to help everybody in this county. And I know I say that a lot, but it's important that we really understand it, and this is an example of the math. I believe very conservatively that the new hotel will generate about $52,000 a year in new sales tax that'll get divided amongst these entities. Now the second piece is occupancy tax. So in Burke County, occupancy tax is used to promote and generate activities that generate heads and beds, that put people in our hotels. 6% is the total occupancy tax charge per room night. That's the most allowed in the state of North Carolina. How that divided out in 17, 18, there's a small fee that Burke County gets for processing all of that. There was $523,000 in sale, in occupancy taxes generated in 17, 18, county outside of the City of Morganton. The money divided up this way. Morganton, $114,000. Valdez, $63,000. And I might add that they don't have a hotel in Valdez. And then the, the Tourism Development Authority and Burke County got the remainder, the $330,000. I think conservatively, we're going to generate $155,000 a year in new occupancy tax relative to this hotel. That money will go a long way toward continuing to promote the great things that happen in this county that people get to take advantage of. The dollars are real. I will also say that our hotel stock is, in some cases, less than adequate, and that is the reality. We have hotels that are sitting in a situation where they are at risk of losing their flags, which means that if they're associated with a Choice Hotel, a Hilton Hotel, a Sheraton, you name it, that they're at risk of losing that, because they're not doing what's required for the franchisee to keep that. That's serious. We have a hotel that is also in jeopardy with some of our interstate interchange rebuilds. And if that hotel goes away, in that road project, we lose that occupancy tax. You cannot build a hotel in six months. Occupancy tax is an important revenue in this county to a lot of us. And I've got some more. So, Main Street, because we don't always get to talk about this. The Department of Commerce just put out what the statewide totals are for what happened in Main Street communities across the state last year. That's in 17, 18. $222 million in public and private investment, 1,288 new jobs, 247 new businesses, 255 building renovations, 373 facade improvements, and 115,000 volunteer hours valued at almost $2.7 million. So that's what happened last year in Main Streets across the state. Since 1980, when North Carolina started working with the Main Street program, $2.87 billion in public and private investment, 5,914 renovations, 6,216 facades, 5,657 businesses, and that's a net gain, counting losses, and 23,355 jobs in Main Street communities in North Carolina since its inception. So what about us? So we started this business in 1982, and this is what happened since then in Morganton, as per the Department of Commerce and the records they've been keeping. Almost 20 million in public investment, almost 54 million in private investment, 166 buildings renovated, 228 facades, 168 businesses, and 533 jobs. Those are pretty nice numbers. I think I have one more, don't I? No, that's it. So I've done all that talking, and I did all that to say that I think that we've met the requirements of the DIG. I think that the project meets the requirements, and I think that our analysis of it is clear why there's a public purpose in helping to support a project like this.
We're still in the public hearing, but anyone else like to speak after that great presentation? Your name and where you live, please.
Thank you so much. My name is David Bennett. I live at 217 Riverside Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of this project, and thank you for considering the DIG for this project. I'm one of the lead developers on this, this hotel project, and just want to give you a little bit of idea of what the process has been so far, how far we've come on this. Looking at my computer, the first file that I created for this was December 13, 2013. And we've been working on this project since then. It started out as a, an idea, a kernel of thought, if you will, as far as what, what we might need in this community. We'd had data behind saying that there was, was necessity for this, but there was really no evidence. There was no comps in the marketplace. It had never been done before. And so we started the process of, of research, and, you know, it started with finding the applicable property, and then from there, researching the marketplace, working on initial building plans. From there, it was going to the next step as far as costing. We had to get our, our co-developer in line on the project, and believing in the Morganton community, and the Burke County community, and what it, what it provides. From there, it was going to Marriott, and convincing them to why Morganton is a great location for them to put a flag. As you probably know, they're the largest hotel chain in the world now with the combination with Starwoods, and that was an uphill battle, but the need, and also how the numbers make sense for the project. Going from that was then to fill out the investor pool. And so we filled out an investor pool of roughly 50% local investors and 50% from outside the area. And so for that, we have, you know, those investing in the project are all considered educated investors. And so for the local investors, we need to make sure that, you know, we want them investing in our communities opposed to investing outside of Morganton. And for the outside investors, this is their first time putting any money into Burke County or Morganton. So we want to make sure that they are seeing the opportunity and also realizing the return they're expecting on that. Following the investors was getting our, our principal financing in line, which was another, another uphill battle, just because there was no comps in the area as far as what, what to expect. And so that has been actually also obtained as well. So, long story short, in every step of this process, it was uphill, because it had never been done before. But that did not deter us from this, and I want to say thank you also to everyone here, as well as, in particular, Ms. Sandy, Mr. Blonsky, and Mr. Luckadoo, who were instrumental, along with everyone else at the city and county levels. From there, we have, we're kind of where we are right now. And so we've got these two more hurdles to clear for this project. And so I mentioned the investors before. You know, we have two things that we need to really make sure happens in the project, so we, we can ensure future development in Morganton from these investors. And one is meeting a return on investment for them. The second is also for our lending organization, is to meet a debt service coverage ratio in return, in turn, as far as the returns on the project, so that it meets our demands as far as debt goes. The DIG is instrumental and critical for those two things occurring. And so that's where this, this, having you review this is very, very important for the success of this project. Our closing with our, our bank on this is actually in roughly two weeks, and this is one of the items which is on that agenda prior to that. So every, every step of this way, we've gone through, and we've, we've cleared these hurdles, and this is one more. So thank you so much. I know it's, I know, and it's very important to us for this project, but we appreciate what, what you're doing. And finally, to, actually Sally, or Sandy said the perfect word before, is catalyst. You know, this has not been done before, but it does not mean it's going to happen again in the future, as far as we see this project being a catalyst for growth in this community. You're talking about, given our occupancy rates, you're looking at an average of 100 additional people in downtown Morganton per, per evening. The typical spending levels that you see, as far as what, what you see in the national market as far as to spend, is whatever someone pays in lodging, they double that in their local expenditures. That's food, that's gas, that's groceries, that's everything else. And so in that sense, the downstream effects in our community as far as how this project is going to relate to our local economy are fairly, very large. The numbers which were spoken about earlier are, are direct. They're related exactly, directly to the project. They're not related to the other businesses in the community that will thrive in relation to this project. So what I'd like to say is thank you, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for David? David, thank you. Anyone else like to speak about the project? Yes, if you'll come forward to identify yourself. Your name and where you live, please.
My name is Keith Suttles. I live at 3106 Hunter's Ridge Court, Morganton. Kind of segue on what David said, we didn't plan this, it kind of worked out this way. I look at it as a ripple effect. I'm more of a visual person, and I don't know if you knew what was going on in Morganton and Burke County this weekend, but they had a 50K off-road race at Lake James. There were, it capped at 200 riders, so there were probably a four or 500 people involved in this. And just kind of going out and talking to folks there at, at the race, you know, a lot of them were staying in Marion, Hickory, a lot of them drove in from out of state and stuff, because there wasn't a place for them to stay. And then yesterday, there was the cycle NC that came through Morganton, and there was 1,100 people in Morganton yesterday. So I kind of, I work at Brown Mountain Bottle Works, kind of hung out there and watched that the, they brought the trolley out, and were, and there were 30, 40 people at a time getting off the trolley in downtown. Here again, they were staying in tents. Here again, like I said, I'm a pretty visual person, so I rode out to I-40. All the hotels had bicycles parked in front, and probably they were nowhere near enough rooms. These people had a hard day yesterday, too. I guess they had like five or six inches of rain and blocked their, their campsites and stuff like that. But here again, it, it's that ripple effect, and that hotel, I think the city used 62% occupancy as the, as their conservative estimate. I look at it, if there's...
84 rooms, 85 rooms?
85 rooms. Even if it's 50%, that's, and one person to a room, that's, that's 44 more people in Morganton out walking around, looking to eat, or entertainment, or whatever. And I spent a lot of time there at Brown Mountain Bottle Works, and, you know, I'm kind of shy, so I don't really talk to a lot of people. But, you know, one of the big questions, is there not a place to stay in downtown? A bed and breakfast, is there not a hotel? A bed and breakfast, is there not a hotel? An Airbnb? I mean, there's a few of those things around, but there really isn't a lot of places for people to stay. And this past weekend is the, is the, the exception. I'm sure we're not going to have eleven hundred people in town every day, but even if you have forty-four more people in town, and the ripple effect and the money they'll spend in the places downtown will just, all the numbers you were giving would, you know, it's direct, like David said, it's directly related to the hotel, but that doesn't include all the businesses that will benefit. Us being one of them, I have a selfish reason for wanting this business in downtown, so... Appreciate you letting me talk to the council and the mayor, and I hope you guys consider this and go forward this project, because I think it's really, it will help everybody in Morganton and Burke County.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council? Does the council have a wish?
We go get to the right page, Wendy. Okay. Motion to approve a development incentive grant to the Michael Krin and David Bennett, Managing Partners of Morganton Lodging Associates LP, and to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute and issue those agreements on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary.
Thank you, Wendy. Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to be clear, so that no confusion about this, if I may, Mr. Mayor, obviously the agreement is drawn up, it's, is to, the grant would be to Morganton Lodging Associates Limited Partnership, of which Mr. Bennett, Mr. Krin are the partners. It's not, wouldn't be to them individually.
Okay, I want to make sure.
It was kind of, we, I see we phrased that kind of poorly.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a consideration for calling for a public hearing to close an alley extending northward from Concord Street between South Sterling and South Green Street.
No, we're not holding a public hearing. That's...
Oh, the consideration for calling a public hearing, okay.
Been a long day.
We're in public hearing mode.
Yeah, we are in public hearing. I'll ask our city attorney to talk about the consideration for calling the public hearing.
Should be a straightforward matter. You have attached in your materials a request from Billy Pyatt of Catawba Brewing to close a portion of the alley that runs, and he's attached a little map, although it's so small scaled, it's hard to tell. But if you're on Concord Street right there beside Catawba Brewing, between South Green and South Sterling, parallel to the two of them, right in the middle of that block, is an alley that runs northward from Concord Street, doesn't go all the way through the block, it runs and runs into a cross alley that's there behind what's now the Republican Party headquarters and the former Wisteria location. They're proposing, the Pyatts own the properties on both sides of that alley through a company called Pyatt Properties, and they're proposing to close it as far as the back or northernmost end of their properties. It wouldn't affect the remainder of the alley. If you're interested in pursuing this, then you will have to call a public hearing and notice it for your next meeting. I should have added, this is an alley that, it's been there a very long time, it's historically been open to the public. More recently, it's frankly, Catawba Brewing has parked trucks there, so it's been, I guess people sometimes come through it, but very little, there was no through traffic, of course, and again, the public hearing.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to call for a public hearing at the city council meeting, six p.m., November fifth, on the petition close, to close a portion of that alley extending northward from West Concord Street between South Green Street and South Sterling Street, and to authorize publication of such, of such hearing.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, a consideration of a bridge loan for Morganton Lodging Associates LP and associated budget amendments. Sally?
Ditto everything that I said two items ago, and I do have one more thing to say. I'm sure that's surprising to people. The other thing that I will say is we have had the opportunity in downtown, and we have done some great projects in the last twenty years, and there has been a lot of investment. Several of those projects, I believe, as I put in your information, are transformational and made really big changes. Those, in my opinion, are Yanni's Restaurant, The Cinema, Marquis Cinemas, and the building that we're sitting in tonight, which is Morgan and Trading Company. All three of those projects took city participation and partnership to cause to happen. In the first two, we made economic development loans to them. This building, we became the anchor tenant, and which really made us the anchor tenant for the whole East Union Street redevelopment, and I think the success of those projects really speaks for itself. I think the hotel is another one of those, and as David indicated earlier, this has been a learning process, and every step of the way, there has been something else to overcome and to deal with. This is also a project that qualifies for one of our small business CDBG loans, and it is one that qualifies for a seventy-five thousand dollar loan because they're going to have more than ten full-time employees. They have completed the application process with Lisa Hilton, and we, the staff, we have taken a look at that. The challenge is, unlike all the rest of the CDBG small business loans that we've done, this is a new build. This is not a redo of something that's existing. We've never done one for a new build yet. So at this point in the process, we find out that because it's a new build, HUD is requiring that there be a certificate of occupancy awarded for the project before we can fund the loan, even though it meets the requirements under our program. Obviously, you can't have a CO until the hotel is completed. And so the question before you tonight is to consider a bridge loan for seventy-five thousand dollars. It would be at a four percent interest rate. It would be at a not-to-exceed-an-eighteen-month term, and the idea would be that we would have personal guarantees for the managing partners for this loan, and that this loan would get paid off at the time that the HUD loan is funded, which will be when the hotel receives a certificate of occupancy. That loan will come back before you for funding at that time. I will say again, we are recommending, if you move forward with this, that we would do this out of our capital reserve fund, which is how we did the other economic development loans for the other projects that I spoke about earlier. I will tell you that currently, there's about one point three million dollars sitting in that economic development fund. We would pay that back once the HUD loan is funded, and we would pay this loan off.
Okay, council, we need two motions. What is the wish of council?
I move to approve the bridge loan to Michael Krin and David Bennett, Managing Partners, of the Morganton Lodging Association LP, and to authorize the mayor and our city manager to execute and issue those agreements on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make any alterations, technical amendments, and changes may be necessary.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to approve the necessary budget amendments to appropriate the transfer of seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund to the general fund for the bridge loan for the downtown hotel project.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of grant awards of entitlement funds to nonprofits. I'll call on Sally for that.
Each year, we set aside a portion of our CDBG money and go through an application process for local nonprofits to be able to apply for that funding to help in their operations. This year, we had twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to use for that purpose. We had three applications, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to the Meeting Place Mission. That will be used to replace a sewer line that is failing and also a repair to a HVAC system. The House of Refuge for nine thousand dollars, and that is to be used to assist in meeting the needs for the stays in the shelter, and used to pay for repairs, supplies, transportation, and those type of uses. And then finally, Burke United Christian Ministries, they requested nineteen thousand five hundred, but we have six thousand five hundred left in this funding cycle, and that is going to be used by them to assist with their housing assistance program, which helps to pay rent deposits up to three hundred dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award fiscal year 2018 entitlement funds to nonprofits as recommended.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of approval of a change order for secondary clarifier rehabilitation at the wastewater treatment plant. Sally?
Brad gave the precursor for this earlier. This was a project that we had budgeted in this fiscal year. We had budgeted it four hundred thousand dollars. In finding out that it is also going to require a plant shutdown, and as Brad indicated, wanting to only do one plant shutdown if we can, the anticipated lead time to get the materials for this project is thirty to thirty-six weeks. That has extended greatly due to the hurricane and all kinds of challenges with getting necessary equipment to make repairs. Staff has negotiated with Heron Construction, would ask you to consider treating this as a change order to the current project. Having the same contractor who's mobilized and on site, we believe, will help with the efficiency of it and also with the cost. They have given us a cost proposal of an amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. We would ask that you consider this and that we fund this through the current CIP money budgeted.
I think we need three motions. What's wish of council?
Motion to authorize a change order to the existing contract with Heron Construction Company Incorporated of Etowah, Tennessee, in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to be funded from the approved fiscal year 2018-19 Capital Improvement Plan budget for secondary clarifier rehabilitation work at the wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then we are also going to transfer this money to the capital projects funds out of our regular budget to the capital projects fund, so that it'll all be accounted for in the project.
Okay, I need a motion.
Move to amend the capital budget, project budget for the conversion and improvement at the wastewater treatment plant due to a change order.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then Sally, that last motion would be to transfer...
Which is really, you need two budget amendments in order to do the capital projects budgeting.
What's the wish of council?
Move to transfer funds to the capital project fund to accommodate a change order.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we have consideration of authorization to enter a contingency agreement with North Carolina DOT to participate in the planning and construction of a new drainage system on South Sterling Street. Sally?
This is an easy one. Back in June, we adopted a resolution letting the Department of Transportation know our request for some funding on the storm drain repair in the South Sterling Street area. They promised us an agreement, we have now finally received it, and this agreement would allow them to participate in that project, funding three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city would be responsible for the remainder, and our current cost estimate is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the contingency order from the NC Department of Transportation to construct a new storm drainage system on South Sterling Street.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I think the last thing on our agenda is the thirty-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions. We have some upcoming expiration of terms on the Historic Preservation Commission, the expiring terms of Joan Malik and Dottie Irvin. Both Ms. Malik and Ms. Irvin have been longtime members of the commission. If you'd like to serve on any position on city, on the vacancies and appointments for boards and commissions for the city council, you can get a request for appointments during business hours at the clerk's office or city website. Do any council have anything else to come before city council tonight?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We...